Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty eighth. In compliance with state law, city councils, special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltis.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Herjehausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. First up is Reports of Commissions Economic Development Council, Josh, welcome.
Oh.
A couple of this.
Sorry. I'm trying to rush through it. Yep.
We're trying to hit the eight o'clock mark.
Seven fifty-nine. No, go ahead. Just approval of the agendas. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, Josh. Now it's your turn.
I don't. I've been to enough of these to know that something hadn't happened. Wasn't exactly sure what.
I printed my own agenda. That's the problem. Krista usually has everything ready for me and I didn't do that.
All right. It sounds like we're on a timeline tonight, so.
No, we're not.
I'll be brief. Uh, just a couple of things from CEDIS, um, since my last reported, so, uh, trying to just continue some of the same themes and initiatives that we've been working on for quite some time. So, out of our B two B, uh, initiative, which is really just us going out and talking to businesses, doing what Regan might call our economic gardening, um, we continue to get feedback that crime is a concern, not just a concern, but something that truly is affecting our businesses. So, we decided that we're going to hold an open house on April second, uh, where we're going to really just, um, generate discussion around what some of the themes are around that, uh, in particular, maybe try and establish uh, consensus on what our biggest pain points are. You know, one thing that we've talked about internally is that it's really important to help our businesses understand that reporting crime is important, uh, in, in, in a, you know, more, I guess, organized manner. So, we'll talk about some of the crime stats, uh, in Covington. Uh, again, the importance of reporting crime, uh, talk a little bit about and educate the businesses on the B and O tax and its utilization, uh, and then continue to educate around Septed Principles. Uh, Justin Van Landshut has offered kind of a, a gift, uh, or a, a credit to business, uh, some drawing, uh, business can get, uh, or can win, uh, he'll donate five hundred dollars towards there. Um, maybe making some changes with their business, uh, to make it more, uh, less vulnerable, uh, if you will, through Septed Principles. So that's cool. Um, again, that's on, that'll be on April second, uh, and so we're looking forward to getting some businesses in and talking about that. We're continuing from our side, uh, CEDIS's side of the Karma Statue Project, which is really how do we engage the businesses in getting one, getting a statue? So, um, I think you have been briefed by Regan at some point around the idea that we settled on, which is that the city will likely lease these to, uh, businesses, which is a great idea, by the way, as far as making it more approachable for some businesses who may not have the upfront capital, uh, to put forward, uh, toward this. So, working on that. Uh, and then we continue to have a pretty significant subcommittee, um, that's helping to generate discussion between Valley Medical Center and the city itself in, in kind of how we can call, those two groups can collaborate on the health needs, uh, in, in our community and the development of their adjacent properties in the town hall, um, kind of town square center, district, um, Valley, of course, being a major property owner right there, adjacent to the city-owned property. And there's some synergy there, uh, as far as what we can maybe do together, uh, to create a, uh, kind of a cohesive and a, in a synergistic kind of idea around health and community, um, health and whatnot. So, we continue to do that and that keeps us pretty busy. So.
Thank you, Josh. Does anybody have any questions for Josh? No, thank you.
What time do you plan on the open house being?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Youth Council, Silas, welcome.
Um, so at the last meeting, we were gonna introduce new members, uh, but they weren't there, so we didn't introduce them. The next thing that we did, we were talking about logistics for our Olympia trip for LIAC, the Legislative Youth Action Day, um, from Sunday to Monday this upcoming weekend. Um, so we're excited for that. Uh, working up questions for our representatives. So that's exciting. Uh, then we talked about the Student Art Month planning, uh, which we just briefly covered what it was gonna be and then what day we were all gonna come in to start organizing all the art. Uh, and then the last thing we talked about was forgetting. I had it. It was. Oh, yeah, the Great Kindness Challenge. Yeah, we recorded a video with just inviting people to participate in it with us. But, and that was all we did.
Great. Well, thank you for doing that Great Kindness Challenge and everything else you're doing. This council, have any questions for Silas?
Good luck at Olympia.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So you staying the night down there? You just traveling both days?
Uh, staying the night.
Great. Okay. We'll say hi to everybody. We'll be following down on the eighteenth.
Awesome.
Right. Thank you very much and tell everybody thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Have a great evening. Arts Commission, Riley, welcome.
Thank you. So the Arts Commission is becoming a little bit busy, um, as of late. We have our annual treat on the Retreat on the Horizon, which is very exciting. Uh, as I've explained in the past, that's where we come up with our new big ideas and where the Karma Collective idea actually came from last year. Um, we also have a joint meeting with the CE DC, um, with you guys, yeah?
No.
Yeah, so that's gonna be on March twenty-seventh, where we're gonna talk more about the Karma Collective initiative and, um, uh, potential with leasing the statues instead of, uh, selling them, which I agree, I really like the idea of leasing it because that way we can maintain them instead of just having a business buy them outright. And then who knows what kind of, um, you know, how much maintenance they would do, or if the statue like looks poorly, then it's gonna look poorly on the city. So, there's a bunch of benefits to that and a lot of other details to discuss, um, there. Uh, outside of that, um, we have a little bit of progress with the crosswalk, um, i- idea that both the Youth Council and the Arts, uh, Commission has been talking about. Uh, I've been told that there's a meeting for the, for the ordinance in February, so I will learn more after that meeting occurs. Um, outside of that, we, um, do have an official report on our light boxes. We had around, I think it was around five boxes that we officially picked all the art for and the locations. Only one of them has been installed as of now. Um, we ran into a lot of weather issues, so unfortunately we're on hold until the springtime to finish that out. After that, we planned for summer of twenty twenty-five to do a call for the last, I think, the last round of art boxes. Um, and then that project will probably come to a close unless we get more, uh, electric boxes in the city. Uh, those are all the updates I have for the Arts Commission.
Great. Thank you, Riley. This council have any questions? Jennifer?
Um, I was curious what the status of, uh, replacing the spire is, the art that was being.
Oh, I, um, I actually haven't heard.
Okay.
About that. So I will write that down as something to address, uh, the next meeting. I know that unfortunately for that piece of art, it's, um, like a glass blown full piece. So, uh, the whole piece needs to be replaced. It can't be identically replicated. Um, but we can choose to either go with that same artist that we've already, uh, paid for their artwork, ask them for a replacement piece, or do a new call for new artwork.
Okay.
Um, so the last that we talked about it, we weren't sure which direction we were gonna go, but I can put that on the agenda for February. Thank you for bringing that up.
Anybody else? Riley, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And thanks to the entire team.
Yeah.
I will pass that along.
Have a great evening. Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, do we have anybody here for that? Human Services Commission, Catherine.
Somewhere.
It all runs together. Yeah.
There it is. I don't know where I am and what's happening. Welcome. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm Catherine Lind, I'm with the Human Services Commission. We, the commission asked me to briefly share with you, uh, some work that one of our funded agencies is doing here in the city to let you know, because when we did our joint, uh, meeting, you seemed very interested in knowing the actual work that's happening here. I'll keep it super brief. Uh, I wanted to let you know that there was a mother who was, uh, leaving an unsafe situation at, uh, the Head Start program at Jenkins Creek Elementary, the preschool there. So she had to, uh, remove herself from one big, one place. And because of that, she was not able to get transportation and daycare for her children who are attending Head Start preschool, which is funded by Kent Youth and Family Services. So our funded agency, and thank you for those funds, uh, reached out to a daycare provider and some transportation providers, uh, providers inside the city and was able to get that mom, her children back into the Head Start program, uh, Kent Youth and Family Services at Jenkins Creek Elementary. So that's the kind of work your funded agencies are doing here in our city limits. I just, we thought maybe you'd like to know. And I, I know I have only a brief amount of time, but we would like to continue giving you these updates about the work that your funds are providing for folks here in Covington.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. And thank you. I know it's a little bit long, so thank you very much.
No, you're not being long. You're perfect. You're good.
We have time.
She wants to be done in.
Yes. Keep going.
I just.
No. Keep going.
But yeah, our, our Jenkins Creek Elementary, um, preschool is fantastic. Head Start's amazing. Uh, it's not a funding year, so we have a lot of work we can do in the city. So our work, uh, priority for this year, which is not a funding year, um, we revamped our operating principles for the Human Services Commission. It's difficult work and sometimes we have differing opinions on how things should be handled. So we have a conflict or tension. We have a, a, a list to look at to help us manage that. It hasn't been really a problem yet, but you never know. Times are tough. So we have those, uh, principles and they're on our agenda every time. We can look at that. We, uh, welcome two new commissioners to our, uh, commission. It's very exciting. Super awesome. We have our road meeting schedule set to come present to you, council. So we've got that all. So hopefully you'll be able to see members of the entire commission come visit you. We're very grateful and get to come here and see you. We do also on off years try to go see site visits, which is visiting, um, and, uh, talking to our funded agencies. So we have at least two of those on the schedule right now. We have to be accommodating to their schedule and the work. But wait, now we do plan to go see, uh, Lutheran Community Services Northwest and Housing Connector. Right now, one of our priorities is housing. I know it's tough times for folks out there. Make sure our funded agencies are being responsive to the needs of people in Covington. Um, we were, we are interested in finding, uh, ways to communicate with people who live here in Covington. So we're gonna try to be more active, a presence and, uh, community events like the Makers Market at the Town Center Lawn, which I love and thank you for my bag. I love that so much. Covington Days and, uh, Chamber Events and other opportunities we have to actually be physical presence this here in places in Covington as, um, events happen. We also hoping to have more of a presence on social media that's accessible to maybe youth. People are not so accustomed to Facebook. So our human services supervisor is reaching out to the marketing manager to explore ways to make that happen, just to facilitate communication with folks that don't necessarily maybe use Facebook, who aren't comfortable coming to City Hall or looking at the, um, the webpage. And, uh, we are also this year gonna, um, incorporate the information we got from that survey that you graciously provided for us and see if we can update our brochure that's available as we hand out to folks inside the city of Covington. I think that's, oh, there's more. Um, oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Yes. And we, we do try also to have, uh, physical outreach events at some of our places here in Covington. In the past, it's been in Polaris. And we also went and visited, uh, Covington Place. That was fantastic. So we hope to be able to do at least one of those this year, reaching out to residents, bringing our funded agencies to there, trying to connect services. And we also find out that agencies that come to those, uh, those events also talk to each other and find ways to support each other inside our city. And, uh, we're also gonna finally have a meeting with our Chief of Police, which is outstanding, and our Community Care Specialist. And we get more information from their experiences to incorporate into the work that we're trying to do. I think that's it. Do, yeah, yes, please, Mayor. That was a lot.
Uh, no, thank you very much, Catherine. Uh, yeah.
Just, uh, I appreciate it. This, this is great. Um, wondered, uh, I've, I've attended some of those outreach events. I went to one in Polaris and, and thought it was outstanding. It just occurred to me, do we do anything at the library too? It's kind of a different group. It'd be interesting, maybe not the entire breadth of all those groups, but a truncated version. So, I think the more.
Okay.
Places we go and connect with people that they're our service. That's one of the things that was mentioned in an interview we had today is that just continually communicating and making it, educating people that these services are there and how to get them. Um, I think the library is a place where.
Okay.
We're, maybe a community we're missing or can tap into. So.
Thank you for that. I'll communicate that to the commission. Thank you very much.
Beth?
Along the same veins, I'm not sure. You, you, you mentioned that you all wanna try to focus on youth and maybe getting.
Yeah.
Connected with youth. And I don't know if you guys thought about connecting with Youth Council and figuring out partnering.
I think we should do that.
Yeah.
I mean, since that was your, you know, a goal of yours might be.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I will see if we can, I will pursue that as well. Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I will take that back to the commission.
Catherine, thank you very much for a very good report.
Oh, well, thank, thank you, Mayor.
You have a very wonderful evening and, and tell the entire team thank you.
I will. And thank you for your support, for the support work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation Commission, Laura, welcome.
Hello. Uh, I am reporting on our meeting in December. We didn't have one in January due to staff availability. But in December, we met and we talked about all things dog park. Uh, so Ethan put together this like incredibly fat and comprehensive dog park report. I don't know, maybe you guys got one too. Okay, perfect. So you saw it. Um, so maybe you don't need to hear all of this because you saw and read it, but from the commission's point of view, um, as we probably picked up from the report Ethan prepared, Covington doesn't have a great location nor the funds to create a permanent dog park at this point in time. So then the commission was talking about, well, do we put up a temporary dog park? Some of the concerns with that is that once you put up a temporary dog park, then you kind of possibly have a permanent dog park. Um, it's hard to put up a temporary something that people want and then take it away later. Now, temporary, in our case, could be up to ten years. So that's a very long-term temporary, but it's still ultimately temporary. So there's advantages and disadvantages to that. Um, we talked about if we did do this, where would we put this temporary dog park? Uh, some of the more obvious places, uh, from Ethan's report and the discussion were, um, possibly until the new maintenance facility is built in the like Matt's Skate Park area, you know, by Mattson. Um, the Town Center Lawn came up, even though that's being used for some programming. The undeveloped part of CCP came up. Possibly, um, there's some area where the new Covington Elementary is that it belongs to Kent School District. Um, but we could possibly see about looking at that. Um, overall, the commission, actually the, the most favorite place was the Town Center Lawn, which I kind of think is a non-starter because of the popularity of the drive-in movie contest. There's not, or contest, events. There's not enough room for a dog park and drive-in movies. Um, otherwise CCP Mattson Skate Park area were kind of the other winners. Obviously, we're having a new maintenance facility built, so that Mattson Skate Park area is gonna be very temporary if, if we do opt to do this. Um, CCP would be a little more permanent. The concern is that, uh, because that area of CCP has not been developed out, if we put a temporary dog park there, that could become the permanent dog park, even though there is already a master plan for that part of CCP. So, lots of things to consider, but no dog park is going anywhere because we have to pay for it. So then it became a matter of if we decide to do this, where would we pull money from? The commission was adamant that we are not gonna take any money away from the Aquatic Center project or any trail projects. Um, trails because they're the highest on the pros plan, the Aquatic Center. I mean, hopefully for obvious reasons, but, um, we, we desperately need a new one. Uh, we would, the commission would consider supporting taking funds away from Founder's Park. Phase, it's, I wrote in my notes, phase one, but it's, phase one is almost done. So it would be the next phase. Um, maybe Jenkins Creek. Um, you know, ideally, we wouldn't have to take funds from anywhere, but you guys all know, there's a lot of priorities and a very limited amount of funds. So we felt as a commission, we had to be responsible and consider, uh, that option. In the end, um, we didn't come to any consensus of yes, we really need to do this and we need to do it tomorrow. But we do now have all the information in front of us. Um, we talked about, you know, the positives, the negatives, kind of explored all that. Ethan got information from his community representatives on what we would support, what we wouldn't support. And everybody else on the community, uh, on the commission got a little bit more education of why we don't have a dog park yet. Um, so that was, that was the whole agenda for December and it, it took a shocking amount of time. Um, a couple of things that I wanna just note from Ethan's report. This is a little bit dated, but if you guys haven't been to the Aquatic Center and seen the beautiful window, they hired an artist to paint the window in the Aquatic Center and it's absolutely lovely. Um, so if you happen to be on that, up in that area, maybe drive by and take a look. One other thing that I wanted to just call out, um, and it's a while ago now, but the Veterans Day Flag Retirement Ceremony that happened at CCP, I think was like, the whole commission just thought that was really fantastic. We were really happy to see, um, something happening in Covington on Veterans Day and CCP being kind of activated and used for that purpose. So, that got rave reviews, uh, from the commission. Uh, if you've driven by the Jenkins Creek Park Project, which is very nondescriptive, but basically the new parking lot and entrance for Jenkins Creek, you will see that it's almost near completion. Um, so we're just waiting on a few punch list item things. Um, I don't have a date as to when that will be done, done, but we're, we're getting there very, very close. And that is my report. So in April, we will, um, elect new officers for the Parks and Recreation Committee because that kind of like resets our year. It's like the first month of our new year. So that's one of the things on the, wait, did I say April, February? Sorry. It's one of the things on the new agenda. Uh, okay, I'm gonna be done.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Does anybody have any questions for Laura?
Thank you very much and thank you to the entire team.
Okay.
Have a great evening.
Thanks.
And Planning Commission, I don't believe we have a report tonight. All right, that concludes our Reports of Commissions. Uh, next is introduction of our new District Court Judge, Judge Harn. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate the opportunity to tell, to introduce myself and to let you know that I am your new municipal court judge for at least the next year at the Regional Justice Center in Kent. You may be aware that you moved from the Auburn Courthouse to the Kent Courthouse, which I think is much nicer. And, uh, and I just really wanted you to know that, that a little bit about me, so you have some sense of who your judge is. Um, I've been a judge for over thirty years, most of that time at the King County District Court. I've been their presiding judge four times. I'm currently the Assistant Presiding Judge. Um, I've spent a lot of time hearing municipal court cases. I started in Burien as a pro tem judge doing city of Burien work and have been the Algonah and Pacific Municipal Court Judge for quite a while and still doing their calendars um, on other days when I'm not doing Covington. Um, but I totally enjoy it. I wanted to also let you know that you have really good prosecutor and public defenders working on your cases and that we are jointly really working towards justice and having a safer community for the city of Covington. Um, I think we're all aware of the challenges that the defendants are facing, that your community members are facing, that your, um, stores they're facing from shoplifting. I, I think we're well aware of those things and really doing our very best to, um, have there be consequences for bad behavior, but also resources for better behavior and being kind and gentle and understanding at the same time and firm with our expectations as well. So I hope that you, um, if you have any concerns or questions, that you're welcome to reach out to me. Um, I'm really interested in doing a good job for you and, uh, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. Looking forward to, uh, working with you.
We, we look forward to it too. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Have a great evening. Uh, next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law RCW four-two dot one-seven-eight dot five-five-five. And seeing nobody on here, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. All right, seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, we will close this first public comment period and there will be a second opportunity towards the end of this meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. Next is new business item number one. To consider appointments to the Parks and Rec Create Recreation Commission. Does council wish to take action this evening? Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move to bring Laura Morrissey in, um, to fill position number seven of the Parks and Rec Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Laura Morrissey to fill position seven of the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Well, Laura has already been filling the position, um, as the Chair of the Parks and Rec Mission and, um, it was, it was good to hear some insights and input from her tonight. Um, she's well versed in educating new commissioners as they come on board. And, um, she also knows that she, well, she also knows how to shepherd the new newly appointed commissioners through the process and, and she understands, um, what regulations, rules and regulations that a, a jurisdiction has to go through. Um, she talked a little bit about the importance of an MPD in the city of Covington to, um, further our sustainment of a revenue, well, a sustainable revenue source for continuation of our parks. Um, you can tell that Laura is very well connected with our community. She's an avid runner. She, she's pointed a lot of things out to us. So it's, she's been educational to us as well in telling us about some pitfalls that we have. Runners, um, encounter some unsavory individuals occasionally in parks. And so it's helped us to focus, um, and bring some clarity to areas that we need to pay attention to. Um, and then she sees the importance as being a, a voice between staff to bounce ideas between staff and council. And she understands that fine line between where the commission reports to staff, but as an advisory to the council. And that's really important. It's not something that is easily learned, but over time Laura's learned that. It'd be great to have her continue.
Thank you, Debbie. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Um, Debbie said most of the things that, um, our interview was about, but I'll just speak to Laura's character and, um, it's very evident to see when someone cares about what they do. Um, it, very simply in their excellence of executing their position. Um, Laura is intelligent. She's elaborate. She tells us not just what we want to hear. She tells us what we need to hear and it's interesting when, when asked questions, she answers from the lens of this is what the residents want. Um, it's just very clear that Laura cares about our community. Um, and I, and I love that she is passionate about educating our Covington about how, how government works and where, where, you know, their, where their questions are, she's able to answer and then turn them around from complaints to, you know, uh, to praises. So I think Laura's been doing excellent job for a long, long time and would love to see. And would love to see her doing that for quite a few more years.
Thank you, Christine. So anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? And it's been moved and seconded to appoint Laura Morrissey to fill position seven of the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, Laura. Uh, we do have another um, position to fill. This council was to take action tonight. Okay. Go ahead.
I'll move. Uh, I'll move to appoint Wesley King to that position seven of the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
He's position five.
Oh, five, sorry. Yeah, five.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint Wesley King to fill position five of the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. Um, I was just impressed with Wesley's um, past service and his desire to get more involved in his community. Um, he's been volunteering uh, for organizations that uh, impact people and communities outside of Covington and he's now um, at a place in his life where he has some capacity and time to want to actually I'm sorry, uh, Larry wants to give to uh, to Covington. So he's got a degree in recreation management. He must have decided about um, using that as well. Um, been a leader, said for a very long time um, in the uh, US Army. And I, I think he's got a level of passion that uh, will be good for this, this commission. So I'm gonna support, obviously.
Thank you, Sean. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
I think something that really stood, stood out to me for, in his interview was that he wants to see more green out there and get people out of their houses and to those green spaces. And I think knowing that that is what we want too as a councils, we want to have those green spaces for people to, to go out and enjoy. Whether it's a dog park, a new park, or just a trail for people to be uh, enjoying. I think that's, says a lot that that's something that he's passionate about is getting those green spaces for people. Cause he said he's spent his whole life here, uh, minus the times he's been uh, shipped around by the army. And saying that he remembers when it was more trees than people here. And now he'd like to see those trees come back and finding ways for that to happen. And I think he would make an excellent fit for the Parks Commission.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
Yeah, just, um, just to be brief, one of the things that um, we, Sean talked about his energy and his passion. And I think one of the things he talked about was trying to um, maybe provide more event con, uh, an event contact, content calendar and trying to activate more of the green spaces and as a volunteer, I know that sometimes it can be hard for the staff, depending on what their staffing levels are, but I felt like that's, feel like that's something that's gonna be increasingly important as we bring more parks online and trails and you may have that energy to help see some, support some of those events.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
Thank you. Just briefly, I, I have known Wes for over twenty years since he was in high school in the ROTC program. And then went on to serve in the Army Rangers. Um, and he's led multiple teams across many um, deployments in, in many different um, areas of the world. He, he's a very strong character. Um, he, he shared some of his ideas with us. I think he's gonna be a great addition to the team.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Wesley King to fill position number five of the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Wesley. Next is new business item number two, consider an appointment to the youth council. This council was to take action tonight. Debbie?
All right. Um, I moved to appoint uh, Manus Sanclaw to fill position number five on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Manus Sanclaw. Did I pronounce that right? Okay. To fill position number five on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I was, I was really impressed with, with the way he carried himself, the professionalism, but caring, um, I think he'll, he's a very well balanced human being and he definitely was able to portray his passion for his peers, compassion. Um, and one of the things that he was, um, the consistent message that we heard over and over again was like peer-to-peer influence, being there to help inspire uh, particularly around their education and academic needs that, that students might struggle with, uh, being there to be an inspiration and helping to improve um, or help, help elevate the awareness of resources for his peers that might be struggling. It's very well rounded um, uh, goals and I was very impressed.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Beth. I'm, I'm trying to hit this thing down. Sorry, Beth.
First, my, I see you. An excellent interview. You, even though you said you were nervous, we could not tell. As somebody who sat in front of large groups of people and the nervousness showed, you did a wonderful job. Uh, secondly, I think one of the most telling things that we ask is what do you think is the best way for the city to communicate with the youth? And we've had the youth council now for what, s- eight years, seven, eight years now, something along that line? And it's amazing to see the progression of how that question is answered. I remember when we first started, the answer was, oh, Snapchat. Now the answer is put the announcements in the school. But I think he had the best answer. He said, show up in person, you know, be there. Be, uh, you didn't actually say this part, but be seen, show up. Be a constant presence, go to the schools. And I think that's something that we all have said we want to do is go into the schools. And I think that having our youth council be a conduit for us to be able to get in there a little easier is a great thing and having someone, having our students tell us that that's what they want to see is a constant reminder of that, that's what, what we've wanted to do is what they want us to do as well. So I think that's great. And I think having him on the council will be a great way for us to do that even better.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? I just want to say how impressed, how professional. Yeah, you are beyond your years and wisdom. So very good interview. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Manus Sanclaw to fill position number five on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? Congratulations. That concludes our new business. Uh, looking at future agenda items, we have our next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February eleventh. We do have a joint session with our youth council at six and then our council meeting following at seven. Does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda later this year? All right, seeing none, let's move into council staff comments. Chief?
Uh, as, as you know, I think uh, I sent it to Regan, but we had our drone capture uh, using our drone of a uh, drive-by shooting suspect uh, that occurred in Sammamish that came down, not into Covington, thank goodness, but uh, uh, was captured with this Spartan drone, which was a great asset tool for them to uh, safely apprehend these people. So thank you for your support in that program. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Ethan?
Yeah, good evening, council. Uh, nothing from you tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Uh, just one thing, I probably already know that um, as far as the weather uh, coming up this weekend and stuff, there is some potential for the uh, little white things that come from the sky. Um, so um, if we have to respond to that, obviously we will be monitoring that and do so hopefully. Hopefully we don't have to and, and there won't be any issues, but everybody, uh, if it is the case, uh, be safe.
Great. Thank you, Dawn. And thank you to your team for always making sure that our roads stay clear. Thank you. Selena?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Uh, nothing for me tonight either. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
There's no executive session this evening and I have no additional report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Regan?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I let council know a little bit ago that King County Sheriff's Office was eliminating the hiring bonus. That was a pilot run they tried for a quarter that is now back on, uh, implemented this month. So they have now have a new twenty-five thousand dollar hiring bonus. So hopefully that will help with recruiting and keep up with our um, local neighboring agencies that are hiring. Uh, uh, offering of even more uh, higher bonuses than those. Also, this afternoon I shared with council that there's a federal freeze on grant funds for certain projects. Uh, the one I shared with council is the minor home repair program. Uh, looking at it a little bit further, there are some other uh, projects or programs that we have going on here that that will affect. A federal court judge did, in the DC Circuit, did um, halt that freeze until Monday. But uh, the programs that affects one, the minor home repair program, our current Jenkins Creek Park uh, project that has some federal funds associated with it. CIP ten sixty-three, which is our Covington Way intersection, CIP eleven twenty-eight, which is uh, five, not five sixteen, two fifty-six between one hundred eighty-fifth and one hundred ninety-second. And then a small emergency management grant and then some police traffic safety grants. We get a few thousand here and there periodically from that. Nothing to be alarmed with at this point. Um, we'll see how these shake out. These could all be back in place soon or not. But uh, we'll work on that. Some of these, like our project with Jenkins Creek, we may be able to close those out uh, already with the money spent. So we, we may be fine. But just a heads up, that's the status right now and I can update council as, as that changes. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan.
Just, just one point clarification. It was five sixteen, Regan. Uh, one, one eighty-fifth, one ninety-second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
Good evening. I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
Um, I for one, I'm pretty excited about these little things falling from the sky for the weekend. Especially since it's only for like Saturday, Sunday and it's supposed to disappear. Not wishing hard work upon our staff, but I, I do want to play in the snow at least once a year. Um, just grateful for the summit that we had on Saturday. Testament to how awesome this entire city and staff and council is and yeah, looking forward to them a good and productive year.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
Yeah, very, uh, I love the council and the summit that we went through with our staff. Uh, it's, it's always rejuvenating, even though there are sometimes some very hard decisions and things that we need to discuss. And we haven't like landed on necessarily a hundred percent solutions for everything, but, but just the collaboration and, and coming together. It's, it's, it's uh, very inspiring for us to hopefully move forward on some stuff this year. Well, if snow comes, make sure I'll monitor that. Get the team their uh, their snow nuts in the morning. Cause we, they need their energy so they can file roads if they have to, so. Um, looking forward to seeing what comes out of Olympia and spend some time with our legislators. And I, yeah, I can't, I can't thank enough our Gordon Thomas Honeywell staff, the, the reports that we're getting are so thorough. And there's a lot of legislation that's coming through this session to be able to look at, look at when um, getting brief overviews, have a quick link so that if there's something that we want to go and testify on or just find out the status of it. Uh, they're very well done. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First off, I enjoyed meeting Judge Harn tonight. I'm trying to remember, have you ever had a judge come in?
Yeah, it's been.
I'm already impressed.
It's been a long time.
So anyway, that was outstanding. I, I've asked the city to follow and thank her for that, but you know, invite her if it's appropriate to future. I'd love to just hear more about the process and how we can it, it's interesting, it's kind of come up tonight, uh, talking about crimes, it's come up in a couple of uh, of our uh, commission uh, presentations. And just so happened, we got the email from Regan talking about our crime stats are showing our crimes down. But public still receives it and, um, that it's going up. So we've got to do, one, there's the enforcement, but we also got to start ed- do more to educate to show, yeah, it's, it is getting better here in Covington because of things like, you know, we have judges and prosecutors and defenders, but also because our businesses is taking it uh, seriously and doing the reporting that we need to make sure we put the resource where they need to go and then mention the use of new tools, um, things that are helping us to uh, hold people accountable. So um, anyway, it was great meeting the judge. Couple other things, um, well, just one other thing. The RFA meeting, uh, regional fire authority meeting was last Wednesday. Uh, they had a uh, quick presentation on the uh, call out for firefighters down in Los Angeles. They said it uh, well, went as well as they could hope. Um, they uh, plan on having a presentation uh, before the board on what and how the uh, RFA firefighters were deployed. And I recommend that they come to each of the partner cities, city council present as well. And I think there's a, a consensus among the board members that we should hold some type of dedicated event to wildfire prevention and, and um, resources and what the communities can do. So I think the RFA is interested in that, gonna go and look into that. So at a minimum, I want to get the RFA on our agenda in the future when they're ready to present on how it went. One of the things that was interesting is they mentioned there's uh, they did, not of the RFA, but the overall uh, response dealt with quite a bit of miss and disinformation related to the response. I'm sure you heard some of it. One of which was, there was a uh, meme going around that all of the um, trucks that went down there had to go through San Francisco to get inspected. And that those that didn't meet California air emissions were turned around. Well, if you did any halfway thinking about it, California's not on I five. So it's, or uh, San Francisco, they would have had to go out. It's true, they had to get inspected, but why would they do that? Well, they want to make sure the trucks are safe when they go out for the firefighters. So if they don't respond to something in a, in a situation where the truck may get them in, you know, in trouble. So they are actually were making sure they can do what they're supposed to. Here's the other thing, when the trucks left, they were inspected again and anything that broke while they were there, California is paying for to take care of that. So I, it just made me furious to hear people were trying to undermine just the whole response and it's the exact opposite of what was basically going on. They were inspecting to make sure those trucks could do what they needed to. So that they don't send the firefighters into position where they end up getting killed or injured. So it just, it just, it, it made me furious. So anyway, that we even have to waste time on those sorts of things. The other thing that made me furious, this, I, I couldn't even, I couldn't even believe this. Um, so there's a, a growing trend, people listening to the callouts, emergency responses, you know, some people do it for, for uh, they just want to know or they're interested. Well, there's a lot of criminals that listen to those too. And our engines are getting targeted on calls. They have had equipment stolen off their trucks while they're responding to a fire. Most notably, uh, they've had the things like the jaws of life and other crash response equipment. They're stealing them and then using those to um, destroy ATM machines. So um, it was, I just, I just could not believe it. So in response, they're having to lock those parts of their trucks when they're responding. So it takes a little bit longer to respond and they're also looking at uh, tagging all of those, uh, that equipment. So that if it does get stolen, you know, And they're also looking at, uh, tagging all of those, uh, that equipment, so that if it does get stolen, you know, they'll know and then they can hopefully find it on, uh, their Apple phone or whatever, but it just, I, I like, I couldn't even imagine, you know, someone listening and then responding and while the firefighters are trying to save people's lives, they're getting, they're getting rocked. I mean, that just, anyway, um, otherwise, um, RPA continues to do great work. You know, they, uh, promoted a number of people, gave out some awards and it's just, uh, it's just, I appreciate being on the council and being able to represent you on that, on that board, so, thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, that's it.
Thank you. Well, two weeks ago tonight, we heard from King County Metro and it, it was a pretty bleak timeline in terms of when we will get any additional bus routes through here or a bus route up through highway eighteen to Snoqualmie. Um, we, we did get a response to my questions and it really didn't give us any more information. They don't have any data about what the ridership would be. So I guess, you know, I'm not gonna drop that. We'll continue to to, to push it as, as much as we can. Um, so at this rate, it's gonna be twenty fifty before there will be a, a route that will go from Auburn to Snoqualmie.
I can walk there.
Yeah. Um, so. But there was one thing that, that we learned out of that presentation and in her, the follow-up notes, and that is um, we have six, uh, van pool, um, van pools going from the Covington area for now. And we've pushed that, well, not pushed it, but we've advertised it on our social media page um, about that that is an option for, for riders. But now they've also come back and said that they will, they will give a discount to riders that earn less than twenty-five dollars an hour. So I'm wondering if that's something with that new information that, um, Michelle shared with us, if that's something that we could post. That is a high priority, but just a, did you know? Okay. Um, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer?
Um, ditto to everyone's comments about the summit. It's always, uh, a very productive and, um, enjoyable, um, event. I always look forward to it and leave feeling like there's a lot to do, but also energized and full of hope for the upcoming year. Um, just a quick note about Ryan Nine, they, uh, will be coming to a council meeting sometime this year to give a review of the ILL, ILA interlocal agreement that, um, is being updated in twenty twenty-six and is shared across the municipalities that are in this watershed. Mark has already seen it. It's gone through the management committee and the forum, so I just wanted to give you all a heads up on there. Um, there were no, you know, significant changes and, um, I will likely be co-chairing the forum committee with council member Troutner from Ken, so that should be fun. I haven't chaired or co-chaired anything in a long time, so. Go for it. That's it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Uh, just to kind of piggyback on to Debbie and transit, right now, if you wanted to get to North Bend, we'll just choose that via bus, it would be an eight-hour bus ride. So, Sean, you might be able to beat that too, walking, just, just adding that in there. So, uh, to piggyback on that, I will continue fighting, uh, for new routes long before twenty fifty, uh, to be coming to Covington and Flint Mipple Valley, Black Diamond, so that we can all get out there hopefully, uh, without the need of a backpack and a nap on a bus to get there. So, that being said, I was, the summit on Saturday was great, good information. I always enjoy just getting together. We throw out random ideas, see what sticks to the wall and see where we can run and, uh, I don't think we're gonna go too crazy this year. I think we're doing, doing a lot right and trying to figure out the best ways possible to find the best solutions for our residents and making sure that we're all happy with the end result. So I think we did, I think it was a great, uh, great way for us to start the year and I'm just looking forward to see where we end up and in December. Uh, that being said, I hope everyone stays warm this weekend. I know it's fun getting out to my car and it, my car telling me it's twenty degrees, so hopefully it's not twenty degrees when I get to my car after this meeting, but I'm looking forward, I'm hoping for a little snow this weekend, uh, not for, not cause I don't, I want a snow day from school, but because I want to throw snowballs at my kids, cause I don't think I've gotten to do that in a couple of years, so it's, it's always fun. So, everyone have a great weekend. Looking forward to our next meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I know we only have a couple people in our audience, but thank you very much for being here, but I want, I know that this meeting is recorded. And I want to pass a message along that everyone on our council, everyone in our staff works very hard, not just in our community, but regionally to help make things happen the proper way. We get things thrown at us, mandates, unfunded mandates. We get rules and regulations that are thrown at us and we work the best we can to make sure that our residents and our businesses are taken care of properly. And we don't just, when someone just says, well, this is what you have to do, we don't stop. We keep pushing back to make sure that we get the right thing. And I know that like what, uh, Sean, you shared some of the comments that were made and stuff, but that goes on a lot of things. We don't get together, our s- summit that we had was planning, looking back, but looking to the future to make sure what we need to do to make sure that Covington continues to grow in the right way. We work hard to do the proper things and I know some people sit back and don't see the whole story and that's, and it's hard not to see the whole story of what goes on behind the scenes. Uh, we don't just sit up here passing rules or talking, joking, working hard. We wanna do what's right. And I just wanna pass that on to everybody. And so I wanna thank each of you here at the dais. I wanna thank everyone on staff and I wanna thank residents who show up and those who work side by side with us to help make things happen. So, thank you. Um, had the pleasure of working with, um, several council members. Over sixty people showed up on Martin Luther King Day out at Tahoma National Cemetery. I know it's right outside our city limits, but everybody still says it's Covington. And working with the Rees Across America Group, Cindy Compa- Comte, uh, overseas to Homer National and some of the things that we wanna do for next year, and I just appreciate everybody who helped come up and we got forty-two hundred wreaths ho- collected in an hour and a half.
It, it was the quickest thing I've ever seen. I'm like, I think they're all off the ground in forty-five minutes.
It was, it was actually less than an hour, they were picked up off the ground and, um, I stuck around afterwards to, to thank all the cadets and everybody that was there. It was, it was, um, I mean, it's, it's a.
Light work is with that many hands, right?
But it, and the wreaths have grown from only two hundred to forty-two hundred. Over a million wreaths were laid across the United States on the second Saturday in December. And we're looking to increase the Homer National Cemetery by at least fifty percent, another two thousand for next year. We need over eight thousand to give, um, a wreath at each.
How is it decided where they go? Chris and I were wondering.
It's just when people, when volunteers come to lay, they just lay them. Uh, last Wednesday, um, Crystal was very nice and, um, set up a meeting for me to meet with the third graders at Crestwood. Um, Mr. Raleigh's class, it was amazing, the questions that do you, those young, uh, they're nine years old, nine and ten years old in ninth grade, or third grade, already promoting them higher. Um, but they were extremely good and one young lady asked the, some very good questions about the B E S S. So, yep, uh, it was very good. Uh, yes, uh, meeting the judge, the last time I remember a judge coming was two thousand eight, I believe. Wow, it's been a while. So, it might, I might be off, but yeah, thank you for getting that set up, Krista. Uh, it was a pleasure meeting her and I wanna thank our commissions, um, everybody who serves on our commissions, volunteers and helps, um, they do a lot of hard work also to help us. They bring decisions and facts and background work to council to help us make those decisions as well, so. Thank you. With that, uh, we'll move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Yes, just come up to the podium. Thank you and thank you again for being here tonight.
Absolutely. So I have a little bit of a address prepared. By the way, my name is Manus Sanclau. Uh, my organization, I suppose, is Kentwood High School, but now thanks to your vote of confidence, Covington Youth Council. I'd like to end the meeting on a positive note because I heard a lot, a lot of important things that needs to be done today. I'd like to speak to what Mr. Smith spoke today. One of the most important things that I have noticed throughout the community is that we are noticing crime rates being lowered. I know it may not seem like it, but from what I have seen, it is, especially speaking to the jaws of death being used to open ATM machines. I can assure you that we are all equally as disgusted as you were to learn this. Just a few weeks ago, right in front of where I work, I work at Ripon Sports Medicine, there's an intersection on Ken Kangley, right in front of the fire station. A poor, I believe, seventy or eighty-year-old lady was pulling out and was hit in a forty-five mile per hour high-speed crash. And the firefighters and EMTs were able to respond very quickly and minister the jaws of death, or jaws of life.
It happens.
And as far as I'm aware, the lady is on track to make a full recovery. It was just amazing to see how quickly they were able to respond, how quickly the traffic, traffic cleared up and how quickly everything was settled. It was shocking to see how, just how much work you guys have put in and referring to my cards again, beyond like whatever policies and statistics that may be shown, it is clear that you are making decisions and listening to the community and I cannot thank you guys enough for your dedication towards our community. Your actions inspire us all. So, and you, no matter what it seems like with the jaws of life being used to open ATM, I believe greed will always be the thief of joy and comparison will always be the thief of joy. I think what you guys are doing is fantastic, no matter what. Just know that you always have the community's vote of confidence and I'd just like to thank you once again for being here for us and I will rest my time. So you guys can all get home. Thank you very much.
And thank you and congratulations again. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Seeing nobody approach the dais or raise their hand, there is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh three.